This to or. Oops, we're calling a meeting at 5:31. And and. Where's Jessica? There she is. Can we make a motion to move Jessica to voting status at this point? To be our fifth person? I'll make that motion if someone seconds it.
I'll second it. She can second it.
Okay.
Can you can you take notes and or can I take minutes and second at the same time?
I just tried. I see I was successful.
Very successful.
I have to practice a little bit.
Eric, don't poke the bear.
We can we can change the name to multitasking group instead. And let me get my minutes here. So the regular minutes, we I believe we approved it last month, our special meeting of February 27th. Of course, they were fabulously done by Joanne.
I see what you're doing here.
Well, I mean, it's just plain true. It's I'm not even brushing you up. You just do a really good job. Any comments or questions or changes to the minutes?
Nope.
No.
No, okay, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Second, thank you Victor. And there's Peter. So I a note of order then tie since Peter has just come, but we've already voted Jessica into voting status. What's the legality on that?
I can. I can. Should I peel off or remain?
No, you stay, even though you look like you just ridden your motorcycle in, but.
It's been it's been a long a long. What day is it today? Whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean.
Tuesday.
Friday.
Yeah, if you've got all five members, then I would see Jessica and see your regular member before business.
So we have to officially do that then? Yeah?
Yeah, it's appropriate to have your members seated first if there was their opening.
All right, so I'll make another motion then that we as Jessica to. Speaker speaker mind, but not be able to vote after all and become an alternate and Peter is here. However. That's where.
Yeah.
And that was the second from somebody I just heard some.
Who was the second?
Who said yes?
Oh, I guess I seconded.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Is anybody is anybody else Zoom breaking up? I'm having a hard time hearing. He keeps breaking up.
I'm good.
You're good?
Okay.
I'm okay.
I don't I lost power a few minutes ago, but so far so good with the meeting.
Yeah, it is very. It's windy, very windy here. If any of us lose power, whoever is loud, just someone else carry on. We'll just barrel through it. All right, so our applications, the first one on the agenda this evening is 04.22. 88 North Main Street. A new metal roof, landscape restoration, and the addition of two French doors on the north side. And I've. There's a gentleman here. I've forgotten your name already. I'm so sorry.
William Buzzard.
William. William is here to adjust this. So William, it's all yours.
Okay, so what we're requesting, and I can only speak for the landscape, the roof and French doors, other structural things. Would be addressed by the structural architect Tassos Kacoris. But the changes that we'd like to propose is there was one hazardous maple that was taken down on the property. Sadly, without permission from the town. So that tree is being replaced with a six inch caliper maple. Which will be, you know, similar in variety. It's called October Glory. And if you look at. The photos and the rendering that I provided, you'll see a photo of what that tree looks like. In summer foliage as well as a fall color. And there are two of those that are proposed, one for the area where the tree had previously been and one at the opposite end facing the road.
I'm looking at the map. Could you just describe a little better? Does everybody have the? Draw in front of them? Okay, so I see where you.
Should be a drawing and also.
Go ahead.
Did you get a rendering as well? Did you get the rendering? I I I sent those to Ty.
Yeah, I don't see the.
If I'm if I can explain what I think it is, is you have a parking lot there and there's spaces for four cars. And it's the two trees on either side of those four cars.
That's that's correct. That yeah, that's the location. Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then in addition to that, the in the speaking of that area, it was originally planned that there were 11 car slots for parking between the two trees. And then six on the end, and that has been increased now. We'd like to increase it to 12. So it's going up one spot.
And okay, is the additional spot? I'm just counting here. It is reflected on this rendered plan.
It is. Yeah. In fact, it's on the it's on the east side. And what impacted that was I needed to. Accommodate a handicap dedicated handicap spot, and it should be on the drawing.
Yes.
And so that, you know, we needed one extra spot and because that spot would again be be identified as handicapped, so sort of takes it out of the equation. So. And then the other, if I may move on, is originally on the originally approved landscape plan. There was a four foot high white picket fence that ran parallel to the road and sidewalk. And the owners looked at that after the approval and thought, you know, it looks too much like the neighboring property. There's a condo just to the right of that. And they have a picket fence. Our one wrote it would just look like a continuation of their property. So what we're proposing is replace that picket fence, and this is something that would be done in the future with the picket fence was four foot high. We're proposing now a three foot high field stone wall. I think you can see that with the way that's illustrated on the drawing.
Do you have any other information on the? The nature of the field stone wall?
You know, I could. Was there a missing not showing an elevation of that? I could have shown a little bit more detail as to what the stone would look like. Again, this is probably 18 inches wide and three feet along. It would go the full length. And then in the future, you can also see a blue stone walkway going from the future porch on the building to the sidewalk. And there would be a ticket gate in in to for access there for the parking lot, excuse me, to the sidewalk. And if there's any question about what the wall would look like, I can easily send something to Ty tomorrow.
Okay, and is it like a dry stack like?
It'd be dry stack. Yeah, we're going to try to keep as much in the flavor of, you know, so that classic New England wall as possible, you know?
Yeah.
So it would be horizontally struck, not a veneer wall. And then lastly on the list is, and you can see, I think, I'm not sure it it wouldn't be on the landscape, black and white plan, but on the rendering, if you have that copy. It shows a proposed 400 square foot patio off the rear of the building. That would not be seen from the road. But, you know, obviously, it's adding to coverage and we wanted to add that to the drawing as possible.
Is that this here?
That's here. Yep.
That's that, you know, it's like a half circle back there. I'm looking at the drawing now.
Over with the fire pit.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, yeah. And it's likely with with the board's permission, they would likely do that patio, you know, probably within the next few weeks, weather permitting. But the wall on the road would definitely be future. I'm not even so sure it would happen this season. It's all. It's all budget issues, you know, because they really are taking this building on in in an enormous way and doing. They're doing a lot of work to it, a lot of restoration work to it. So unfortunately, the landscape is. Kind of gets a hit in the end, you know? Yep. And that's that's it for the changes that we're requesting, if that's.
Okay. So so the permit that we have requesting is for the landscaping and also the French doors, but since no one is here to discuss those. Would we go ahead and just make a decision about the landscaping?
So just to clarify, this is a modification to the original permit. So what you're reading there about the French doors and the metal roof, that's stuff that you've already approved.
I think that's approved, you know?
Right. So what you're seeing, I'm sorry, you're seeing bold is what they're actually asking to modify.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ty. Anybody have any other comments or questions about it?
No, it looks good.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
Looks pretty nice.
So someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a. No, I won't. I'll write it down.
We found your flaw.
I can't write it and say it at the same time.
I'll I'll motion to pass.
I'll second.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, William, for.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Who who seconded that? Was that Pete?
That was me. Yep.
Yeah. All right.
Great.
And to move on to a modification permit from. The 00516 or Irvin Equity. And Billy is here and has done some work on his modifications. We are here to discuss. Landscaping and parking lot both. So Billy, do you want to go ahead? I. Does everybody have the proposed modification list?
Do you mind if I sign off? Is that your? We're good?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I I'm sorry, Billy. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you want to hang around, it's kind of fun. kidding.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Thank you, Louis.
You're welcome.
For this. And. All right.
I haven't seen this before.
This list. So just quickly, you know, as we did, we met, we had the special meeting last week and. Because we had run a little bit longer than expected. The board wasn't able to just discuss or or have any feedback with each other about what happened. And. If there there's an opportunity now, if anybody wants to continue that discussion. And and talk about it now.
Just so I understand, was this list that's up now sent to us or is this where am I just seeing it for the first time?
So based on based on your last meeting, the way it was left was that Billy was to come into the office and. Come in with a specific plan for modification. So he worked with Donna to do that and Donna put together this list for clarification purposes. And also the corresponding site plan. Shows shows what he's proposing. It's new. Based on your request.
This is new. So yeah, take a minute to look and the pink is. Are not yet done. So they're highlighted in pink.
What's number seven remains as proposed?
It correlates with the actual plan.
Oh, there's it's keyed in. Okay. Thank you.
We.
Okay.
Which plan are we looking at? Is it the colored or the black and white with the peak? I guess the peak probably.
Yeah, I think it's proposed notification or modification.
But they're numbered, so you can find number seven, you'll see.
That all seems pretty clear.
I would agree.
I'm having a hard time reading what the writing. On the plan.
If you could pull up the list on your it correlates, that might help you. And if you pull up the list I was showing a minute ago.
Okay, let me try to pull it back up.
And then you can look at the map on the screen.
Okay.
While everybody's looking at it, I know one of the things we talked about last week were all the little these details.
Okay, now I got it.
Okay, and just to clarify, I know that like one of the conversations came about the edging for the parking lot. And my understanding is that the edging, since it was not in the original plan, that that's really not something that we. Can or cannot. Require at this point. Is that right, Ty?
Um, I mean, you he's asking to modify the plan from a paved area to gravel area. So if you feel that it's significant and you want some kind of edging, I suppose you could say that, or you could say, no, I want I want the original black top. But as far as Billy's discussions about the metal edging, that's not something that he was offering to do right now.
Okay.
It's it's okay.
I mean, I know the discussions we had the last time is that you have to have some kind of edging between gravel and. Grass, because otherwise they'll just sort of meld into each other. And so is that something that will come up at some point or it's not part of the discussion at all this evening?
It's it's totally up to you as far as whether you will accept this plan to be no longer, you know, what you accepted was black top. So it's up to you if you want to accept the gravel, if you want to accept gravel with conditions that they'll be edging. I mean, that's that's fine. You've already accepted the black top, so that's what he's obligated to do. And what he's asking is for a modification to change it to gravel. He's not offering edging at this time. But if that's something that you think is a requirement to modify, then that's that's your prerogative.
I I think the gravel would be much nicer than the asphalt. I imagine that, I mean, I under my understanding is that what we're discussing right now is are the requirements that Billy would hit to get the CO. And I mean, I'm I'm sure that you intend on installing the steel edging at some point sooner than later, just because it's going to be. More work on your part, right? If you don't.
Yes.
Like for maintenance.
So can can we go ahead and approve the first part, the driveway part, if we're in agreement? That we're fine with the concrete and the gravel? Or do we have to do this all together?
I mean, you could do it. You could do it piece by piece if you if you'd like.
Since the bot the second half is landscaping and they're. Willing to provide a bond for the cost of those plantings and obviously it can't be done right now. It would make sense. To separate them. And you know, on good faith to know that Billy's going to go ahead and get this taken care of as soon as the weather would permit it.
Yep.
So. Anybody else comments or thoughts on it? I know personally, I would love to, and I'm sure Billy, you will do this because it's so it just makes it look so beautiful to to put some kind of a lovely edging on. The parking area to divide to find it in a, you know, you know, a nice clear cut way.
Yep.
I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Me too.
So should we make a motion?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the modification. From pavement to concrete apron, modification from pavement to concrete handicap parking and modify from pavement to gravel.
And and the whole thing can go into one. Motion, I guess, and to so and to include in that motion, the acceptance of the landscaping plan is is with a bond. Set up for the future planting.
I thought we were just showing the driveway first, but.
Okay, okay.
I that's what I figured we were going to discuss the landscaping, but I don't.
Okay. So like, let's do that. Let's do the driveway. Um. Everybody, anybody else thoughts on that or second? Go for a second on that? Why he don't hear anything?
Oh, sorry, that was I had my mic off. I I will. I will go ahead and second that.
Second that. Okay, and. Let's get a vote on this. Is everyone in favor of going ahead and moving forward on that?
I agree.
You agree?
Great.
Okay. Joanne, I know you do. I will.
Yeah, yeah.
We're good. And Jessica, maybe you do, maybe you don't, but we will never know.
Oh, I know I'm here. I mean, that's that's fine with me. I'm listening. I thought since I'm not voicing that I could I could. Have be muted. But I'm here and I agree.
Absolutely, you can be. No, you even though you're not officially getting to vote, I just love your two cents for sure. So.
Okay. I I concur.
Okay, good. All right. So yay. Well, that passes. And now for the landscaping. Billy, would you talk a little bit about this? I know in our last meeting, you want you were not enthusiastic about making plans. Right away, you really wanted to get how the get a feel for how everything would move and how people would react and where the sculpture was going to go. And so just share with us your thoughts on what you finalized with this.
Um. It was kind of things that I could get done this spring and. I thought that was a good, a good way. I worked with Richard Rosiello, the landscape designer on it and. And we both and he came up with that. Plan that he liked. And that's really kind of where we're at.
Okay, so you feel this is a good sort of basic beginning that then you'll be able to. Once these are in place, still be able to evolve the landscaping and sculptures as you see how things. Move.
Correct.
Okay.
I was I was just curious why you took out the plantings in the front. I think it was supposed to be the low ones. I think it's number five. Can't really see this on here. Yeah.
There are going to be grass grasses along the front of the building.
I just thought. That was an. I just, I don't know. I really wanted to kind of just see how it looked. First, before I put tall grasses in front of the space, there's a nice gray line of the foundation in the front that I really like. And I'll be I'd be blocking it, but it's something that, you know. Get a few of them and put them out and see how they look. That's kind of. Before I before I just did that. Well, you know. That's a big change in it. So just wanted to, you know, have it be right.
Right, right. And you're sort of your your plan now because of the sculptural trees is that they would go in that grassy area. Right away, correct? Where the.
Correct. Yeah. Yep.
So it gives them an opportunity to sort of get their temporary feed in and see how it goes and and then you can. Okay.
Right.
Any other comments or thoughts?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm with Joanne. I like the grasses, but I hear what I'm saying. I mean, if it sounds like it's good for time, but.
I know in the previous board. What we did talk about last year was our we had this wish of getting some taller thinner trees in the front of the building. Too, to help break up the, you know, this blockiness of it. But I think as Billy has suggested, it's something that if it looks like it's needed at some point to you, you know, they can go in it at a different time. And your sculptural trees certainly serve that purpose to start right now.
I guess one of my main concerns and I don't even know if this is really valid, just because it wasn't approved initially either. But it's just the the landscaping and the transition from the parking lot to the backs of the buildings. Next to, you know, to the north of your building and also the Ace Hardware back there. I know in one of the drawings, there was actually, I think, an existing tree that maybe was back there.
Yeah, you're right. That got I think it got hit by lightning and it broke.
Okay.
That was on Casey's property, so he.
Right.
Took it down.
Right, yeah, just.
Yeah.
And. I was going to say you don't have any proposed plantings for back there, but that's just the one thing I noticed when looking back there is that. That could use some work. Or some some vision, just the transition from yours to the other.
Like we should. Does that sound like we should go to the cases then and tell them to replace the tree that was taken down?
Maybe, yeah.
It seems like I would put it back on them. They had the tree, not Billy.
Yeah, right. No.
I need to make sure that was 100% on on his or mine. I think it was like right on the line, so we both paid to have it taken down. It literally was on the line.
Okay.
Yeah.
She's not wrong. It does look odd and unfinished at the back here. You see those sculptures you have stored, but that's fine. I think.
Yeah, the sculptures look good.
Thanks.
It's the rest. Sorry, Victor, go ahead.
I think this is just a good map that shows that, you know, there's more being added here. And here. I think this is just a good map that shows that, you know, there's more being added here and here. This is everything else. He's, you know, he took away one tree that was here, but everything else from this plan looks to be consistent with what he's been showing all along.
Yeah.
So we're actually getting more upfront to those of you that were wanting it to be softer, softened on the road. I think he's meeting that need. And then it sounds like Billy, these blue dots will represent some kind of sculpture pattern in here, those, correct?
Where are you?
Oh, here.
Yeah, it's hard to see those blue dots.
Yeah. In the, in the uh, in the lawn area to the west of the um, to the west of the front facade, you know, and and imagine, I mean, now I'm just daydreaming about future landscape plans, but that really dark facade with that dark wood, if you had a row of like three white like paper bark birches or something like that in front of it, just the the contrast from that white bark against that dark facade would look really beautiful.
Yeah, that's what the uh the originally, I think, was requested from the uh last uh commission was to to use that kind of a tree there.
So I think you, I don't know if you'd have enough room there because now there's a sidewalk there.
Right, right.
Yeah, it would it would have to be to the, you know, to the west of the sidewalk.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that, you know, it I'm I don't know what the birch, their their root system is. Um, but I would, that's not a sidewalk that I think I would like to damage because it was requested by the fire.
Right, right. Good point. Okay, any other comments or thoughts on this? Nope. Should we go ahead and make a motion to accept the proposed modifications for the gallery?
Yes.
Um, for the landscaping plan. And does this include, if we if we make a motion to accept it, that includes that there'll be a um a bond put in place for the plantings when they come up, correct?
So I'll take her, but I'll take her that part in office.
Okay, okay. So I'll make the motion that we accept the revised plans and modification for the gallery. Even first, everybody did.
Everybody did.
Alright. We're good. We're in favor. Alright.
Yeah, we're, do we have to vote on it? I'm voting.
Thanks for me.
Thank you, Billy, for, I know this was a long haul of dragging everybody, but thank you for your patience and
I thank you.
Commitment to keeping it, you know, making it beautiful and and for the town again, so.
Cool. I thank all of you. Thank you. Awesome. Okay.
For your patience.
Thanks for your patience. I appreciate it all. Okay? See ya.
Bye.
Bye.
And and then the last little thing, depending on how burned out everybody's feeling at the moment, um this list that uh Matt Winter had put together, I think it was last year. Um, we've, the ARB has never really had this great guidelines for when people come to us and wanna do anything in the district and um Matt put this together. Um and just to be, everybody had a chance to look it over. It it's the most comprehensive thought thoughtfulness that we've had to work with and it's something I'd really love to uh continue to revise and as we move forward. Did you all take a chance to have a chance to read it through? Okay. And then the other thing, I wanna say, the hardest part of this, the hardest part of the ARB and one of the most challenging without a doubt is that we live in this little gray area and we're constantly conflicted with I am anyway, working with people that we know and care about and um having to be, not good guys or bad guys, but having to to make these decisions that create joy or hardship in somebody's lives. And the better we have um guidelines, the easier that challenge will be and hopefully people won't come to us before they've answered all the questions themselves. You know, we get these, you you can see the application variation we get. You know, you you get these guys who are professionals and they bring these beautiful drawings that, you know, everything's well thought out and designed and done properly. Um there's really, you know, it's 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 great. So it's really just us giving a a checkmark to it or um so, I'm not quite sure what I'm saying, but hope you understand. So I don't know how for for us to really define ourselves to make it an easier process for the ARB to to work efficiently and do what it's really intended to do for the town.
I mean, it would take time and and maybe some resources if you wanted to advance a lot of these points with a drawing detail or something to support a visual.
Well, isn't, didn't um John Baker do that with people get with the application? It's like sort of suggestion, suggested guidelines.
Yes, we had that. We did put that together. Um it didn't, what what that proposal or or that application just didn't have um enough uh detail and thoughtfulness about when someone's approaching a project, what to think about. You know, John is a a detailed guy in his, you know, was, you know, the angles and the
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't kind of broad enough. It was
It wasn't broad enough.
Pretty detailed, yeah.
So I'm not asking us to have to review this right now, but maybe Victor's suggestion or or if we all just think about this and how could we um expand upon some of these suggestions that Matt had and make a more comprehensive uh application for the ARB.
I mean, there's a lot here.
Yeah.
I mean, if I was going to attack a project, I mean, this is a great deal. I mean, and maybe it can be bundled in a different way. So we could talk about landscaping in one subcategory and architecture and color and
Right.
and materials. It's not a bad idea. It's just a matter of time.
Yes, yeah, it's not something we can do, I think, sitting in our meetings. I just think if we each just take a look at this and there's, you know, the people that are on the committee right now are so versed in this. Um, you know, you and Derek, Peter, and all of you have such a sense about this that um it it'd be just a nice project that we could attack over the next few months and really put together a a better base for how we work with applicants.
So I I guess I'm, are you talking for like us to be using ourselves or something that applicants would actually see and it would help them?
I I think it would be great for applicants to see as well.
Okay, okay. So that's what, cause I mean, I see this is, this is like part of planning and zoning and it's sort of our place in what we're doing. So this is really informing us. I could, yeah, I could see coming up with yeah, just things for people that you you know, I mean, they could of course do any application they want, but just suggestions if they were gonna start something about either materials or colors or
And I could see though getting an intern who needs a project for, you know, this would be great for an architect, an intern or you know, somebody who's in school that can build this for us and use it as a, as a and I, you know, as a document that they're building for their project or something. But I mean, I can, I know several interns that are always looking for special projects that wouldn't cost us anything. Or I'd be paid for it myself because I think it's important and it could be great to help guide the
So if I could just interject with regard to the public, um the regulation, what what appears, I wasn't here when Matt did this, but what it appears that he did was pull apart the regulations themselves and create a guide for you guys of things to look at. So it it's already kind of in a, if you if you notice, he's referencing all the different regulations. So it's in a different orderly fashion. If you actually pull up by section five thousand, five thousand of the zoning regulations. Um, I think what his attempt was to help you guys, not so much the public, because we do have the regulations to do that.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
If I could um just add my thought on this, if who, I don't know who's screen sharing, but if you could kind of scroll down to the the numbers, right? Okay, so this is a list of whatever, twenty different questions. I mean, does the answer to all or twenty-six, do do all of these need to be yes in order for something to be approved or is it like if it's more yeses and nos, it gets approved? I think that that kind of like, uh or is it subjective to whoever's, you know, is on the review board and they think, okay, like they're, you know, you know, in terms of interpersonal or subjective interpretation of which points are more important than others, I guess. I think um I think that that like kind of I I think that this is very helpful and I think having a criteria for, you know, by which something could be approved is is essential. Um but like, you know, a little bit, a little bit less open-ended than a list of thirty questions and and uh, you know, these are the considerations. Like, I don't know, like, maybe it doesn't have to be that formal and technical, but that's just my thought.
Right, right, right. But I I mean, for me, is if I were an applicant coming into a town like this, um a and not necessarily having an architect, you know, go, why don't you put in addition on my house or something? To to have these questions that I could say and say, oh, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, you know, just being as a layperson coming into this. Um, it's, I I think the questions are really good for an applicant as well. Just because you'd say like, yeah, I hadn't thought about native plants or the features looking cohesive with the rest of the town. So I I I think that there's, there's a that these are beneficial for applicants as well. But as Victor has suggested, it could be modified and made smaller. Um but it offers someone a scope of thoughtfulness, which is really what we want them to do. Is to be thoughtful to the rest of the the town and what's going on around their their own spaces.
Right. I mean, I think it it also would allow them to come to the to the meeting better with better, more thoughtful plans. So the chance of them having to go back and rethink things or redraw things is is reduced.
Yeah, yeah. So. Anyway, so anyway, we, nothing needs to be, but if we just sort of mull this over, like, you know, Victor's suggestion of having an intern work on it is maybe possibility or modifying it ourselves or coming up with a way, not only to help ourselves, but to create a better application uh for people coming before us. You know, and the professionals know this. You know, all the guys who are working on the Mcfee property, I mean, you know, they're, you know, the everything's done just perfectly. But those aren't the ones that caused the problem, so. Anyway, that was all I wanted to talk about with it.
Yeah, and we should, I think we should all maybe on our own take, like, review the existing application that's on the town website too.
Okay. It's horrible, actually.
It's 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 very different than what we're looking at on the screen right now. And then so if we're evaluating it based off of this criteria and they're pulling together application material based off of what's on the website, there's a there's a disconnect there.
Yeah. So. Any other thoughts?
I think it would be nice not to blindside people with all sudden coming up with all sorts of questions that they had no idea they needed to think about.
Right.
What you're saying.
Right, right, right. And then also you get this attitude. I don't wanna add, but people come in there a little um it becomes a challenge, you know, if you know ahead of times and really think about where your house is going to be in relation to the street. Yeah, that kind of thing, like, you know, you, for example, you know, on one side of the street, the houses, you know, all the buildings are six feet away from the sidewalk. On the opposite side of the road, they're seventeen or eighteen feet away. And, you know, we 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 wanna maintain that and just to have that in the original document just as someone says, oh, yeah, I hadn't noticed that or I hadn't really thought about it, but it's something to take into consideration when I wanna put in addition on my building.
Right.
You know, I guess what I'm thinking, I'm, again, I'm using the word layman, you know, it's the small person, because the ARB was always meant to be um user-friendly and a guideline rather than some dictatorial you know, architectural thing. Like, we always had said, we never wanted to make people come with real professional architects, because we just didn't want them to have to incur that much more of a cost to a project. And so if we make it more user-friendly and more thoughtful from the beginning of the process, I think it will ease the app, it will ease the communication between everybody. You know, someone will come prepared as Derek just said, and and we've got half of the answers already done because they've, you know, read over the criteria and the the stuff that we are interested in. So in your spare time. Kidding. So that was all I had to say about it. Anybody else about these?
Well, I I do think we need to be, um, I I hear what you're saying about working with people in the community. Um, but we are doing this for the community, so we need to always keep that in mind, that we don't necessarily, if someone wants something that we think is not in the best interest of the community, we need to be clear about it.
Yes.
Rather than hemming and hawing.
Yes, yes. And and again, if these, if these questions are provided to someone, some of those answers are done before an application even shows up. So just to contemplate it, that's really, you know, we have it and, you know, a way to improve our um application process, which has been, we we're desperate for you know, we haven't touched it in fifteen years and it's it's not good. So it just needs some attention. And I think what Matt did was a great, great way to start of revising it.
So for for the application, can we change that or does that have to go through P and Z?
We can do, we can put together anything we want and then, I think, give it to Planning and Zoning to approve and tie it, you know, to to redo it. But that original process was put together. John Baker was on the original ARB when it was first started and that's gotta be fifteen years now, sixteen years. Um and that's, you know, the first thing that that came up and it hasn't really been addressed since then. So I would say we're good.
I'm writing it down right now.
To say that we're good?
That we're adjourning at six twenty.
Oh, there you go. I'll second that one.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.